Good evening, Mr. President, Trustee, Superintendent Martinez. We're here to present for information the new budget including L cap funding. And you're going to do that one? Thank you. As we start, I'd like to really thank Colonna because she's also spent hundreds of hours putting the details of the budget together in the sacks and redoing it and redoing it. And we'll mention a couple of challenges we've had as we go forward. So first, where are we? And I've got to say that funding follows function. Under the local control funding formula and the LCAP, so we're in it. If we decide to do under the LCAP, we've done funding. And I'm going to talk from 30,000 feet down to in the weeds and the details and Colonna's going to answer the quantitative issues with some slides too, so we'll share this briefly. We've got an enrollment roller coaster over the year. In fact, in 2001, earlier, we had 90,000 kids. We dropped down to 7,700 by seven, eight, and now we're back up to 9,100 enrollment this year and into next year. And that's caused some significant challenges in budgeting for school business and succeeding. We've also recovered from the Great Recession, but that recovery truly only takes us back to '07, '08. We're no further ahead than we would have been then had there not been a Great Recession. And that puts us well behind other states. There's a great disparity now with the local control funding formula in where schools rank. And we used to rank 47th as a state, and some of our schools are now up around 36th. That's nothing to brag about, but some of them are down 49 and 50 because they don't get a lot of LCAP funds if they have low unduplicated counts. Nationally, we see that the growth rate is varying. We're talking 2% to 2.5%. This is the worst post-recession recovery that we've had, I think, in the history of recoveries in the point in the century. The good news is we're better off than Europe and the Far East at this point. They're down 1.6%, and you probably noticed a few months ago in Japan, they announced negative interest rates. So you put in $1,000, you might get $995 back, and that's kind of protection. Germany has just done the same thing. So we don't see a robust world around us. The Chinese are down to about 6.2%, and that is a suspect number. I think we've all read about the volatility of the oil industry and what that's done to the economies of the world and ours. So the message there is we don't think there's great times ahead, although the UCLA forecast that came out today says California still looks relatively rosy. So where are we going? Next one, please, Lydia. Thank you. Well, we're projecting in this budget and for the out years, flat enrollment. Enrollment, I told you it was a roller coaster. We bucked the trend. As the state of California continued in a downward spiral with reduced statewide enrollment, we actually saw four years of growing enrollment. And you can attribute that to multiple families moving into homes. We had huge density issues, but we bucked the trend and we banked that money and were able to save teaching positions and pay our bills with that. For this budget and for the two out years, we're projecting just flat. This year, we had a little hiccup and went down, but I've got to tell you, as Assistant Superintendent Saunders talked about the attendance recovery program and making it even more robust, we have, by the latest data that just came in, we've recaptured some ADA, average daily attendance, that put us flat and not in a declining enrollment. So that's good news. Where are we going to go next year, though? We're not banking on any increases, so you'll see flat enrollment. We're also at a position with the local control funding formula where we're 95.7% implement. That means next year, if they say we can do 50% gap funding, that 50% translates to 50% of the remaining 4.3%. So that's really only a 2% more implementation. And at this point, the state of California is not projecting 100% funding of the local control funding formula. They're stretching it out, and they're not sure where they're going to go or where we're going to go with them. COLAs, COLAs are low or nonexistent. In January, the governor came out and said it looks like the COLA is 0.47%. He reassessed that at the mayor's revise, and we have zero COLA, 0.00 COLA this year. Next year and the year after, they're projecting 2% plus or minus, at 1.8 and 2.2. You know, a year ago, they were projecting more for this year too, and it's gone. So we don't see a lot of money coming from COLA, and that will significantly impact how we budget and how we pay our bills in the out years. The STIRS and PERS dollars continue to see huge increases as they build out to about 19 or 20% for the district contribution rate. The employee contribution rates have gone up a bit too, but we're taking the majority of that burden at district level, even though it doesn't go in the employee's pocket until they retire. It's money to pay for employees now. State facilities bond, there's been some discussion. The governor was actually against the state facilities bond. He thought it might detract from other things he wanted approved in the November election. It looks like CASH, the, it's a building alliance acronym for the housing, it's a housing group that talks about school facilities. I'm sorry, I just lost the bubble on that. But they have pushed through, signatures are being validated, and we expect the facilities bond will be on the November ballot. The indications are it has a little more support than a continuation of Prop 30 at this point, around 63%. That's good news. The bad news is if they have the old rules to access that money, you've got to have bond dollars to match at a 50-50 or 40-60 rate, and we haven't got that money. Finally, we have some debt, and you'll see a slide that talks to that debt. Part of the debt is from our general obligation bond, part is from the QSKIB, Qualified School Construction Bond, and parts from solar. And with that, Colonna, you want to take the next two slides, please, and talk to the...
Oh, I want to take this now. Here. Lydia, we're going to watch one more. We have... Good evening, school board, President Martinez. This is a little futuristic slide on what we have coming in terms of our retirement increase in cost. The top section shows the STIRS, and this does not include increases in FTE, Highly Red National Staff. For the purposes of showing oranges to oranges in this comparison, it basically takes the existing salaries where we are and what that cost is in terms of them taking these rates here and increasing them over the three years. So we start out paying about $4 million in STIRS this year, and by the time they increase this rate with the same, again, the same amount of, well, this does have the contract that increased in it, but it doesn't have more people. So that difference between these two is it goes up $700,000. And that same logic is followed all the way through to the year 18, 19. Again, very close to the $700,000. The differences between these is a little bit smaller. So you're talking over a period of three years going up $2 million. Now, we've got the PERS doing a similar thing on a smaller scale, and over those three years, we're talking $800,000.
And let me just jump in and interrupt Colonna for one minute here. That equates to per teacher under STIRS over the three-year period, $4,600 per teacher additional that we're paying into the retirement system. And for classified employees, a little over $2,000 a year additional over that three-year period.
But not every, not every employee gets PERS.
That's true.
Right. This, so this is your total of, say, I suppose you are at $2,3 million, and you could probably be safe to say, yeah, about $1 million a year extra it's going to cost us to put into the retirement system. And it's going to, we know some estimates on what it's going to be for the two years beyond this. By the time we get to the year 2019, 20, the STIRS rate's supposed to be up to 18.13, and the PERS is supposed to be up to 18.60. So very close, if you're in there. So that's a continuing scale that doesn't show those next two years.
Is it fair to say that the state of California recognized that the employees' retirement systems were not, they were not able to sustain what that was going to be? So the districts then, or government entities for that matter, then ended up having to take that burden, and we are, you know, we're now responsible for paying that difference to sustain a viable retirement system.
When they were first realizing they were going to finally have to do something to address the shortages in these programs, they first said, all three parties involved, the state, the employer, the employee, we're going to carry this equally. Nowhere near there, okay?
Face and point.
It's the district, okay? All right. Next slide, please, Lydia. This is a little bit about our debt. This first line here is separated by itself because this is a bond that is recognized as our debt by our auditors, and it's actually voter-approved, which means it's actually being paid by property taxes. So don't concern yourself a real lot with this top line. We've got another 17 years on that, and I lend all these at the, my money, that's what is a New York mill on day. So, but now we get down to the QSKIB. That's the Qualified School Construction Fund. Now, we moved over a cap for some construction into this loan, as did almost every district in California, because they said interest-free, okay? The federal government was going to allow you this loan for free. That's not what happened. Only place I know where you could actually change a contract like that is they decided that they would charge a sequestration rate. When the federal government decided that they were not going to make all their bills, they come up with a different percentage every single year and say, you're still going to have to pay this much. So for this year, it was 2.3%. And so I'm not positive what this is going to be in the next year. I use the same number for that. So right now, we're only paying this interest, and then, again, it can fluctuate. But when we reach the year 2023 and '24, for this five-year period, we have to pay back the principal. And that $11 million is going to cost us $2.2 million every single year for those five years on top of that interest. And that is something we need to be saving up for. And we did in this year, '15, '16, put some money into that fund for six, but our plans to do it in the future years changed because we decided to address some of our negotiating issues. The other loan here is for the solar panels, and we've got 15 years left on that, and our payments are $472,000. I have to tell you, though, the savings we're getting on our PG&E bill is...
$477,000.
Yeah, about 80% of our savings on our electric bill is paying for that right now. So like I say, the one that most concern is for USTV.
We are seeing a little trend upwards in our PG&E bills because of proliferation of devices. And because they're being charged, PG&E is trying to go over this, so we're going to realize probably a little negative there, but in general, we're in good shape and it's paying for itself. Next slide, please. Thank you. A little bit about the state budget. Again, I mentioned earlier with the local control funding formula, gap that we got this year, we're 95.7% implementation, so there's not much more money out there. When that ends, the supercharged increases, and that's the working school services in California analyzing the state budget, those dollars go away, and then the only money we get really is a COLA, if we get a COLA, and we're not getting one this next year. And, you know, those aren't going to be good times. They will stretch our budget and challenge us. Proposition 30 is set to expire in two increments. The end of 2016, part of it goes away. The biggest chunk of money that comes in goes away in December of 2018. Now, there is a son of Proposition 30 on the ballot that is getting great support. It's 62% right now. We're not banking on that in the three-year budget for the front year because that money's not there, and that's a wish right now. So we'll see where that goes as we get closer to the November election. So the bottom line is there's going to be much slower growth with Prop 98, which funds schools in '39, almost 40% of the state budget. Next slide, please. There's some revenue assumptions, and then we have some spending assumptions that we'll give you. Again, I told you that we're budgeting flat enrollment, and we have budgeted flat ADA at 95.26, and that equates to about 8,747 and .72 students. We would look at the attendance recovery program, could build that up a bit. Our superintendent has challenged every school to get to 97% attendance, and that would be great. 1% attendance is worth about $875,000 in current year dollars. So our unduplicated count gives a supplemental concentration funding, and we're budgeting that at 84.44%. And that's a three-year rolling average at this point, so even if there are slight fluctuations that get stabilized by virtue of three-year rolling average, that's just come in because we didn't have to look at before. The governor is known well for giving one-time funds out, and there's been discussion of when do they stop being one-time funds. Well, the initial projection this year was about $237 per ADA based on P2 ADA, and that was about $2 million for us. And that's down from $4.5 million we've gotten this year. So that's a significant drop of those one-time funds. In discussions with the legislature in the last couple of days, I've heard that they've come up with a slight adjustment to that, where it may go down another 9.5%, so it may end up being $218 instead of $237. We'll see when that comes out. It was in committee between the governor and the legislature, and I guess that was kind of a love session. They all got along and agreed on everything, the small differences they had. So it won't be more than the $2,000, $2,000. Take a look at the budget. Your slide, next slide, please.
So this is our revenue forecast for the next three years and how it breaks down. This is your target. The target is not going up as much as it had in the past because of the stabilized ADA. So if I'm wrong, and we actually do perform better on our attendance rate, which is always a possibility, then that will be better. But there's very little COLA, none in this year, small amounts here. So the only changes here are basically the gap percentage that we're given and the amount of ADA. So now we go down to, how does it break down for what we actually get? You take the gap times that, and here you are with your total LCFF money. And then that splits into two pieces, into the LCAP money right there, and then the base money. And you'll see that this number goes up, and it takes a little move down. Very subjective number. It's based on not only the number of students you have that are unduplicated, but it's also based on how much money you actually spent the prior year. So again, this is, be aware that almost everything on here is really a moving target. So then we've got, okay, so this is how much money we expect to get into the base. That's broken into pieces. There's a section here that's called add-ons, and we're using all that for our transportation right now. Then there's a EPA, which is this Prop 30 money. Do you see how that drops? Look how it takes that drop. That's on the assumption that that Prop 30 is not going to be extended for those taxes. It's just the hardest out here. But it's just taking away from a calculation up there. It's just how it's split out. My personal feeling is, although no one's really said, is that the laws for our funding for the LCFF is going to override that, that we're still going to get this money. But what will happen if the state doesn't have that extra income? What could happen? They could start stretching out this period of reaching our target. They could give us lower, smaller amounts of increases here. That's where I think it's going to hit us. Then we've got our property taxes, $16 million. Wow. And in the last couple of years, that's gone up about $4 million, and I'm thinking that is conservative. We are required by MCOE to go off with the latest estimates from the coming Treasury, but you know properties are doing, they're going up, up, up. So, you know, this may go up. Unfortunately, it doesn't help us. All it does is offset the amount we get from the state. It helps the state, and if the state has a right to pay us less, then they might, again, give us a little bit bigger gap percentage. And then we've got, this piece down here is what we have to pay back to MCOE through CDE. The students that we are responsible for but are being served by MCOE, we get the money initially, and then we have to give it back. But it's not put where you would think it would be put up as a negative up here. It's not. It's under an expense line down here, $3,007,000. Anyhow, so that gives me my net number that I have to put into my books for our revenue down there. Another slide? No, you're up.
Another slide. Expenditure assumptions are next. We're budgeting, we have 10 more teachers this year that were funded by LCAP. We're adding five for this next year. And so that's 368 teachers. We're projecting step and column at 1.5%. And that's been pretty realistic for our district over these last few years. That's somewhat less than the state average, and that's because we have a lot of teachers at the very top end that aren't getting the increases. If we start hiring younger teachers or junior teachers, that could well increase. In many districts, it's 3% a year. And that'll be important because we'll talk about how we're going to pay for increases here. But we've also budgeted the 3% salary increase and then either benefits or 2% off schedule, depending on the bargaining unit. Good news is that medical, dental, and vision increases remain low with MIGSig. They've been very, very responsible in the management of MIGSig, and they're bucking the national trend with just 8% or 10% increases. We haven't got the final numbers, but we're, you know, we're looking very, very good there. We, again, we're paying more, a bigger percent of benefits for some of our folks, but MIGSig has done a good job of holding tight. Deferred maintenance for renovations and some modernization, we're budgeting $815,000, and that will hopefully, not hopefully, but then is projected to do some of the projects which would include the front office security and modernization of both Lincoln and Sherwood schools. Next slide, please. We continue to see a spiral in the approachment of special education funds that's now over $11 million. The next slide, you see, we'll show you what that number is. Special education transportation also is the biggest part of our transportation budget. We have about 17 special needs routes. We now are being tasked this next year with providing riders for those students who need riders. In the past, MCOE did that, and they're getting out of the rider business because they couldn't hire and support us with riders, and so our Assistant Super H R has a rider job description bringing forward, and will be challenged to hire people to be riders. And with that, the slide, Colonna, you address the next slide, please.
This is pretty generic. It's just run by a major object calls to kind of get a feel for where that money is being spent in the base. And of course, the largest piece up here, almost 88%, is all salaries and statutory benefits and health insurance. We have a small piece going towards supplies and equipment, 4.4%, and an even tiny little slice here for conferences and travel for staff and some preparedness. That's only like $67,000. Now, we've got our contract services and software licenses. There's a lot of things that we are required by law to have. We have to have auditors. We need legal services. We need security systems, and we need software to run our attendance and our fiscal reporting in, and that all comes to this 6.1%. And as Jerry mentioned before, some of the renovation that needs to be done, windows for two of our school sites. Part of that expense fell into this year, 2016, and this is the remaining piece for them there at the $815,000. The kitchen needs to be remodeled at UTEV, and again, that is a legal requirement that we have to do. In the other outgo, there's two categories. Again, I had mentioned that the cost to send the money back to MCOE through CDE is the $619,000. And the next one is a gain, it's a negative expense, so it's a gain, that we get to charge some of the categoricals for our services, and that will affect a little more money towards us. Then down on the bottom is the approachment. The base needs to fund different areas that cannot cover their own expenses. The RMA, the Routine Restricted Maintenance, we are required by law to put at least 3% of our money into that fund to take care of our needs. And special education, both federal and state, right now has just gone again for us, and that's over $11 million that we need uncut, what the federal and state give us and then mandate us to do services that they don't even fund a fraction of. And then we've got transportation home to school and special education, and the reason that's a zero is because that's a wash through the base. The money comes from the base, it goes back to the base, but it's important to recognize because if you didn't have transportation, that would be money you would not be spending on that. We should spend on something else. I want you to realize, though, that 2/3 of that is special education, and that is mandated requirement. So I looked at one district where when the Times got caught, they actually eliminated the transportation. You can never do that with the special education, only the home school. So anyhow, so that brings you up to your total expenses in the base. Lydia, if you want to move to the next slide, I have a similar one for the LCAP. So when the LCAP, I actually worked it badly out. So the, again, your largest piece is in your salaries and benefits at about 74%. And for supplies and equipment, we've got another 8.6%. Small, again, another small travel and conference fees at 4%. And contracts, and these are just some of them. Again, this is very generic. There's new ones that are in the plan for this year and some changes, so that's like $1.9 million. Software licenses, it lists a few of them. Again, there are more, but that's 3.7%. And then transportation, where you pay for some of the field trips, and that comes to like only $10,000. So that brings us up to almost $15 million. Then that involves the district-wide level and the English learner piece and the Family Resource Center. Then, on the bottom, you've got another $2 million that is being distributed towards each of our 14 school sites. And that is distributed based on their number of unduplicated students as of the CBEDs count that just happened this year. And that brings us up to our almost 70... And that brings us up to our almost seventeen million dollars that's in the plan.
Bring us to conclusion. Next slide please. Thank you. The good news is we'll meet our requirement to certify positive for three years. Is that critical? Absolutely. If you're not going to certify positive, you're going to do a third interim on top of your first interim and second interim. And if you're not paying your bills, you're going to end up at risk of being taken over. As I just commented earlier, this district was in dire financial straits some ten, eleven years ago. Our low COLAs though are truly going to stretch our ability to pay our bills. When you look at step and column, and you look at the increase in stirs and purrs, that's more than the COLA money. So we're going to have to take a critical look at what we pay for and what we don't pay for to make sure that we can continue to meet our needs in the out years. The son of Pop 30 will definitely help. We're not budgeting that until you don't see any numbers for that pop at this time. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to see costs exceed revenues in those particular areas. Now, where are we with the Governor? The Governor and the legislature got together, there were small changes, and we expect to see that come out in a week. If the changes are very small, we'll reflect them as we move forward and build our budget into next year. If the changes are significant, we could be required to do a forty-five day revise that we would bring back to the board in August to reflect any significant changes to our budgeting. Our sensing at this time is we aren't going to see any huge changes. They were really on the same sheet of paper or same music sheet too well when they met this last Thursday to decide what didn't quite fit each other's use. So with that, that includes our briefing for the evening. Again, this is for information. We'll bring this back in two weeks for action, for approval as we move forward, and with the approval of review at MCOE by the thirty in June. You have a question?
Yeah. With the optometrist, it's only when you're forty you start to have the reading glasses. And so I really tried to look here, and I, you know, and I have to be honest, I don't understand this question. So this is a question. I wanted to see where I brought up earlier about the cost of opening the dual immersion academy. And so from the information I had, from board information, there was about at least seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to this pop for phase one, and there was going to be a phase two. So I just wanted to know where, where in here are the facility costs or any updates about what was spent this school year? Sorry, I want to look there. This school year, and what's going to be since next school year? Because I don't know how much phase two is going to be, because there are a lot of facility upgrades at the dual immersion academy. And if you don't have it here, that's fine, Martha, but I'd be able to get an update on what actually was spent, like within a week or so, of what was actually spent for the maintenance and startup costs for the dual immersion academy for this year, and what phase two, what the cost for phase two is going to be next?
I know that Mr. Strad went on vacation, so that would be the only, I could get it to probably by the end of next, next week.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
I wanted to ask a question. Is the budgeting in general based on student enrollment?
It's based on projections, didn't we?
Correct. So I would just like to know why is it three years out flatlining, but from the projected enrollment of the board is going down?
I think what he said was that, and looking at your, go ahead.
May I answer it then? It was a real surprise after seven years of increases to see that there were not another increase. And an enrollment of just twenty less students isn't what you would actually call a decline. That's really small. And so I had a lot of discussion with our county office of education on how to handle this, because, you know, I wasn't doing it flat at first. I said, yeah, that's not a trend, you know? And they didn't agree. What you saw is flat because they thought this is a safe middle ground. Whether it goes up a little bit or goes down a little bit, this is a safe place to be. And it's a conservative way to go. So that is the reason why you see flat across the years. But you know, our funding is based on ADA. It's not based on enrollment. And you could have that enrollment even go down, and through efforts to increase your attendance, you can offset that. Now, when I did my P-2 ADA report, we were lower than the previous year. So we had to do what's called hold harmless, and we were allowed to take the higher number from last year. Well, the Saturday schools, the makeup schools they've been doing bounced back. They were doing it all the way through May, they bounced back into that time period of the P-2, and I watched it to see if it was worth revising the report. And we picked up seven more ADA. Well, that's like almost sixty thousand dollars. So I will be doing a revision, and those numbers will change. But at this point in time, you have to use what you know. And again, it's best to be safe and not think things are going to go real erratic one way or another.
So my understanding is that MCOE also holds us accountable to what those numbers are according to C-BED. There's different elements working here. One is about revenue, one is about the numbers, and then how we actually use the number on the actual budget piece.
The rep up that we have at MCOE, when I gave her my P-2 information, sent me back our history for the last ten years. And I said, I know what our history is. I said, I could send you mine too, you know? And she said, no, you know, look at this. This is the right number to use. And we went back and forth a little bit, and told her we're doing Saturday school. Anyhow, this was what we reached as a compromise. And again, we have to pass their inspection.
And the bottom line is they have to certify our report.
Absolutely.
So we have to take direction from them.
Absolutely.
It's ten-thirty, so if you want for us to continue, I think the board needs to say is okay to continue? Does anyone get another ten minutes? It's pretty short.
Just one thing about, she said that it was only twenty students in decline, and your own data in the last two meetings has shown that one-hundred-and-nine students were lost this year. That's right there, very clear. And I kind of pointed out a trend. If you see, the reason why it'll, you know, I said that it'll probably not decline next year, is that there's eleven-hundred-and-seventy-three current students in the sixth grade. I mean, yeah, in the, yes, in the sixth grade. And so when this class goes out, the trend for the kindergarten is in the last year has been eleven-ninety-one, eleven-eighty-seven. So by the projection, that's actually going to offset. But the concern is from the own data is, is that you have the largest classes. You have a bubble from fifth grade to second grade. You have twelve-hundred-and-fifty-seven and twelve-hundred-and-eighty-six. So you have twelve-hundred plus twelve-hundreds. If you're bringing in kids with a current trend which looks to go down, which you presented, when you have higher grades with bigger numbers leading, and smaller grades replacing them at smaller numbers each year, that's projected as a deficit. So from your own data, you have trends here that are really, really important, because yes, the ADA is eight-six-hundred. So when you lose one-hundred-and-nine students, and that's almost a million dollars, as you were expecting last year, Olveranda was open up saying, we continue to grow. But if you really were looking at the data, it probably was already there. So thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? No. Thank you so much, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Strad? Okay.
This was a employee, Mrs. Shiger's woman.
Well, I guess it's under me. An employee who submitted a resignation outside of the timeline that we had. And so it's just a resolution to accept this. This classified person, so we could tie it.
Okay. I've added my next.
This was the action I am following, the same resolutions that were presented to retire reads today. And it's just, thank you, comes over eighteen years of service. And it's all of that, we have a pass of this resolution.
Okay. Yes, it is. Okay, this is resolution number two thousand and fifteen, sixteen dash thirty-three. It's resolution, appreciation of her is Rosalia.
Sadasivaya.
Sadasivaya.
She's a neighbor.
Okay, so whereas Ms. Rosalia Sadasivaya, a health A-type clerk in Monterey Park Elementary School, has been a valuable employee in Salinas City Elementary School District from January twenty-sixth, two thousand, sorry, nineteen ninety-eight to June sixth, two thousand and sixteen, a period of eighteen years of service, and is Rosalia Sada-
Sadasivaya.
Sadasivaya, has long been recognized as an outstanding employee and citizen of this community, and has served the district faithfully and well. And therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Education, Salinas Elementary School District, rests its appreciation for her services and its best wishes for a well-earned and happy retirement. Okay, so all in favor of adopting resolution number two thousand and fifteen, sixteen dash thirty-three? Actually, vote both.
We need a motion first.
Make a move that we accept the second resolution.
Okay, motion is second. Let's have a roll call vote.
President Kim?
Aye.
Vice President Garcia?
Affirmative.
Trustee of Florida Kaufman?
Yes.
And trustee Starber?
Yes.
And trustee Ish?
Yes.
All right.
A declaration of need.
Again, so I have a report before you tonight, a declaration of need, it's fully qualified educators that were prepared to commission a teacher credentialing. And what that is, is we know more in the teacher shortage, so we'll have various interns and others coming to be considered fully qualified. We will apply for at least interns to be awarded an emergency type authorization. And if you see on the second page of the application, it's a various areas, multiple subject, eight, and single subject of special ed, full of eighteen. And single subject being B-class. And if you see above that, it has various areas. So I now set the board approve this declaration of need.
Okay, we have a motion approved. For a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, a second. Approved declaration of need to fully qualify educators, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's it. Thank you, Ms. Shiger. Yes, our next meeting will be June twenty-seventh, six-thirty right here. Anyone have any suggestions?
Are we going to talk more about what we'd like to see for Lincoln School? Or not? I mean, we can do it then or later, or?
When you want to do it.
I personally did not hear a next steps that the board was willing to pursue, some of the things that were suggested such as round replaces. But it sounds like we were just going to go forward with the status quo.
Yeah, with status quo, and then in the year, begin to look at other options, you know, in this next school year.
Somebody mentioned committee to study options or, yeah. Yeah, but you're, but I just, when are we going to start?
With two students right now, or kinder option, you're talking about maybe a combo class, and a teacher willing to take two kids, you know, for that classroom? And the possibility that those families who are those two or three kids, knowing that that could be a temporary setting. So that's what I heard, unless you provide me a different direction. I think that's where we're set.
That sounds like a plan.
All right, so I guess take it under advisement. Richard?